Welcome to the school committee meeting. This hybrid meeting is being recorded and may be accessed by WebEx. The meeting link is on the calendar at Burlington.org. If any board members are remote, well, they're not, so none of this matters. If connectivity is lost and we have a quorum in person, the meeting will continue. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child and individual. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
[inaudible]
Before we get into the agenda, I would just like to do as Melissa did at the beginning of the last meeting, ask for a moment of silence for Audrey Bueri. She was a special ed teacher at Fox Hill School, and I know from personal, personally being involved, that she was absolutely wonderful. She worked with one of my grandchildren who has special needs, and no one has ever been better at what Audrey did. And she will be missed by all the people that she worked with, all the children that she worked with, and all the parents who really, really appreciated her. So with, on that note, deepest sympathy to her family and friends, and please, let's have a moment of silence. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any question, discussion, comment on the warrant? Are we good? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Hi, Mary Ann. Okay, the next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from 6:25, 24.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion, question, comment? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That's unanimous also. Public participation, there's no one here, and I don't see anyone online, right, Bob? Next item, subcommittee reports. Anyone have any? I know it's been a quiet time. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Not a whole lot of stuff to report from the wreck, just ongoing repairs at Panglen Playground, and then the sunshade is going up at the Wildwood Playground as well. There's been some delays with pouring the footings, but it should be back on track, should be done shortly, so shade structure is going up. Also, I'm happy to announce that the field subcommittee has been selected. We're waiting on one more approval, so once that's done, we'll schedule our first meeting in August, so pretty happy to get that going as well.
Does the school committee have to appoint that committee? Eric?
Madam Chair, I think you voted on a charge, so again, I thought that sort of covered the committee itself, and I think when decisions have to be made, Mr. Brooks will take it back to this committee, and again, you guys will be voting on the recommendations of the committee that you charged to oversee the middle school project.
Okay, I just don't want to mess things up, like, I think we should probably check with Amy and find out if they need to be sworn in or...
Okay, I can see if they need to be sworn in.
I can handle that.
Yeah, and then if they need to be appointed by us, we can do it, I guess, at the next meeting. Okay, any other subcommittee reports? No. Ways and Means, Ways and Means reorganized at their last meeting, and the new chair is Doug Davison, and the new vice chair is Ed Parsons. I think they're having a little quiet time now, but we'll get together again before the September town meeting. Any other announcements? Nikki from the Burlington Buzz was trying to do two things at once, and right now, she's at Board of Health. I told her when she could get here, we'd fit her in between other topics. Okay, so, we're on to learning equity and thriving.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to go through our journey to cares in July.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, so, in our first picture, we see a whole bunch of celebrations that occurred towards the end of the year, including our mentee celebration, and there pictured is Pauline Kim Sung, and just want to give her a shout out for her. She's an author, and she wrote My Cambodian American New Year. It's a wonderful story about her life and celebrating her New Years with her family, and she's pictured down there below. Next, please. A lot of these are either the closing ceremonies in which we attended, or, as you can see, Fox Hill had their talent show, and there was an amazing DJ named David Rosenblatt, and you can see right there are the Cub Cadets, they come to visit, and also visit Central Office, in which they were getting their passport to various countries and getting stamped to go to those various countries. Next, we have, again, some celebrations at the end of the school year of our rising grade six, and then you have there Dr. Conti, and also thank you to Jeremy Brooks and Melissa Maserata of also attending the breakfast for our scholarship. Next, please. Here we have some professional development given by Dr. John Almerod, and also Dr. Katiri Thunder, and a lot of summer enrichment programs. Next, please. Again, pictures of our summer enrichment program, and some of the professional development that both Eric Conti and I received, going to the annual Massachusetts for Superintendents Annual Conference. Next, please. Again, some wonderful pictures of some of our summer enrichment programs going across and occurring during the summer right now. Next, please. Gloria Wojcicki working with community relations and building those relationships across the community. Next, please, we have our Director of Science Center, working with the tide pools and our students, and they're participating in with a gentleman getting his Eagle Scout awards. All right, thank you. So just wanted to let you know, just wanted to highlight that this Friday, on July 26th, at 7:00 PM, and Saturday, on July 27th, is the best performance of Matilda. Please come and watch that show. Also worked with the Department Chair of the High School Math and addressing parent questions about the Algebra I opt-out process and exam. Next, please. This is a reminder, just please, that as we're going through this process of taking a look at revamping our math curriculum, Katie Whitcomb, the High School Math Department Chair, has already sent this out to parents who want their children in geometry honors, that again, we'll be holding review sessions, four of them, on April 13th, 14th, 16th, and 19th. Here are the topics. Your child does not need to come to every single one, but we highly encourage this. This, again, is free, it will be in air condition, and she also sent out what each of these sessions are going to cover. Signups are no later than August 1st. Next, please. Again, as I talked about, we attended the Scholarship Breakfast for BPS, worked with Dr. John Almerod, Dr. Katiri Thunder, planning for professional development. Next, please. Again, just wanted you to know, attended the Mass Superintendent's Conference. Next, please, with Dr. Eric Conti, and also worked with Dr. Gail Lovett on the Literacy Review Report, that's going to be coming out pretty soon. Hire mentor leaders, worked with the mentor leaders, and this year, it's going to be very exciting. We're going to have four half-days of the induction program over the summer, and we're revamping the mentor program. Next, please. Worked with the IT, the IT team worked to prepare 1,000 new iPads and devices for the next school year. Finalized the new iPad Care Program for students in grades six through 12. Again, the EOI Family iReady and Dibbles Report was sent home last week. Landmark PD Reading Specialists, Grade Five, Ellen Special Education Teachers have all attended this PD session. Next, please. Continue to work a lot on the summer enrichment programs to include robotics, music, and library in those programs. Next, please. We are having a new exciting pilot program. Karen Hoyt and Melissa Parnell expanded their two-week summer program to support incoming multilingual students with learning, the kindergarten routines and expectations. We are also working on our four-week elementary ESL program, or piloting the Strong, which is a social-emotional program focused for newly arrived English language learners, curriculum led by Chrissy Concepcion. Next, please. A big shout out to Gina Page, our new summer program director, where she works with the ESL, but also comes with us with experience in running summer programs. Next, please. We're partnering with Burlington Parks and Recreation Department to provide a pilot summer program for campers at Wildwood Park, strengthening partnership with people, helping people to support summer needs and connect families to services. Next, please. We're also supporting services of our Makino Vento families at Extended Stay, working with the Director of Elementary Alternative Education on visiting students at Lord Barron. Next, please. Really wanted to give a shout out to Chrissy Concepcion, who was awarded a $50,000 grant from DSC for promoting safe and healthy learning environments, elevating student voice and well-being. We're selected as a cohort at BHS Educators to participate in a year-long partnership with William James College, focused on leaning transformative mental health in the school system, and that's going to be with the Memorial Principal and her people as well, too. Next, please. With the Director of the Science Academy, Thai Food Field Trips held at Chandler-Hovey Park with all first graders at each school. She also worked to place over 40 animals in summer foster homes with Burlington families. Next, please. That picture was of the Burlington Eagle Scout Ceremony, where Burlington Student Henry Boulangere was awarded his Eagle Scout Award for replacing the fence at the Owl Enclosure Site, making a gate for a tortoise enclosure and building a shed area for the outdoor enclosure supplies. She also restocked a large flow of the K-35 science kits and materials coming back from the classroom. Next, please. Also, for the special education, we've completed all four DSC end-of-year reports, and also Circuit Breaker is submitted, and Robin Milano is working with Central Administration to support inputting new staff and separating exiting staff. Next, please. With business and finance, she's met with the New England Medical Billing to review the Medicaid billing claims process with the Special Education Director. She's attended the ESA webinar, she's met with supply vendors to discuss and plan a more streamlined approach for purchasing that integrates with UNIS. Next, please. She's filed quarterly Medicaid claims, rolled over fiscal year, and prepared multi-vendor contracts for upcoming work being performed at our buildings. Next, please. Our communication team is working on transforming the new migration over to Parent Square, the web presence. She's working on creating new content, worked with Robin Milano and Mark Robman to create groups and data to pool for upcoming school years to organize in Parent Square. Next, please. She's working on compiling all district branding and collateral materials for all administrative staff to access for a smooth transition into the next school year. Next, please. The Human Resource Team is working on arranging DEI training for school clerical staff to occur on January 2nd, and also for our staff on our Wednesdays, that we're going to be offering professional development to all staff. It is not mandatory, but if you take up to 10 of them, you can get one service credit. Next, please. The nursing staff is working to cover ESY enrichment programs, preparing for medical and behavioral response plans for DSC. Next, please. The operations team is hard at work. Tree work at Panglen and Fox Hill began, the MSMS Middle School Bathroom renovations, Panglen Air Conditioning Roofing Project, received bids for the Francis Wyman Baseball Field, working on finalizing the details. And our technology team's inventory onboarded and configured 1,000-plus new devices spread all over the district buildings, and meeting with the building-level administrators to itemize their needs for next year. And as you can see, we've had a very busy summer. Our summers are spent really preparing for the upcoming school year and for our students. Very excited about what's going to be coming through with math, and also excited to get our literacy review and to figure that out in the future, and also just really, some really good hard work when it comes to Tier One instruction, so very exciting things coming in the future.
Thank you. Any questions, Melissa? Any comments?
My voice is wonderful. Thank you. I'm trying to sing a jazz ensemble.
You need to rest it.
Get it lower. Thank you.
All right. Great presentation, Lisa. Thank you. Since there are no questions or discussion, we'll move on to the Marshall Simons Field Project Committee. This says vote.
I didn't know whether we were going to vote members onto the committee or not, so I just put it there as a, as a sort of precaution, so we may not need to vote, so I apologize if I misunderstood, but Madam Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Brooks.
We're not ready yet, we're still waiting on one more folks to say that they're willing to take it before we bring it forward to the committee and just vote on it.
Okay, can you tell us what the committee consists of so far?
Yes, so basically, we have the Superintendent, Dr. Conti, Operation Manager, Bob Kuna, the Marshall Simons new Principal, Tim McMahon, myself, Ms. Wojcik, and then we tried to spread out the community participation through folks that are sports leaders, community members, neighbors in the area, and try to take a cross-section of all those to kind of spread it out, so there's representation for all the various sports, community stakeholders, and neighbors of the property, too, so we try to get that. So we, voices from everybody, and then a few town meeting members that were actually not for the project, but chose to throw their hat in the ring as well, too, so I think it'll be a great group of people to get this project going.
Good. Sounds good. So maybe at the next meeting, we can have a full list of who's on it.
Correct, yep.
And then if we need to vote, we can vote.
Yeah, I just don't want to put a list out in case it changes in the meantime, so...
Yeah, sure. Okay. Anybody else have questions on that? Okay, now we have some contracts. Dr. Conti, do you want to introduce these?
Yes, Madam Chair. So we're starting with the BEA Unit A contract, and that is the largest unit in the district that's primarily our teachers and educators. And I do want to make sure before you vote to approve this, that I thank the Burlington Educators Association, President Sean Musselman, and the bargaining team that he put together. We really started this process in October, and it took many meetings, and although we disagreed on some items, I always thought the meetings were productive and professional, and I always thought we were moving forward in the process, and that hasn't always, hasn't always happened, and again, so I want to thank them for their time. Our MTA Representative, Jill Coleman, I think we've worked with for, geez, when I first came, I think she was here, and I think she predates even my tenure in Burlington. I know she is retiring this year, so I want to make sure I thank her for her service and her help in getting our contracts done. So it is a very significant accomplishment, given the labor environment that exists, and it does take a tremendous amount of time, and certainly, Ms. Monaco, Mr. Wojcik, and Ms. Simon prior to Mr. Wojcik spent many hours talking through the contract details and making sure we are honoring in a sustainable way the very difficult job that education is and being an educator is. And I'd say just teaching, but that we have so many different members in the, in the unit, that we have counselors, we have, so there's lots of different verbs, but they all do a tremendous amount of work on behalf of the children of Burlington, and I think this contract honors, honors that work. So that's really what I wanted to say to set it up. The union did ratify the contract, and now we're just certainly recommending that the school committee ratify. Some of the highlights of the contract are the cost of living increases were at 3.5% for the next three years, and I think that is in the marketplace now, sort of where the, the cost of living needs to be. And we also expanded the family leave, where there are 40 days given, you have a copy of the MOA, and now 20 of those days will be provided by the, by the district. We provided a, there's a retirement bonus for folks who don't take advantage of the additional family leave days and have accumulated enough days when they retire, so I think that part is, is also included. We wrote in some more specific language for nurses, because there was a time when nurses had a separate, we're in a separate unit, and we merged them into Unit A, and some of the language just needs to continue to be updated as, as we go through that. And the same thing we did with the athletic trainer, we had to continue to, because of her working conditions are very different in terms of the school day, working vacations, we, we had to create some language that made sure that we included her in that language. We expanded bereavement leave to include expectant parents, or if there's a pregnancy loss, or I'm going to say sort of failed adoption late in the process, and I think that was important to the, to the, to the members, and the school committee was very sympathetic to that, to that request, and we made some other language, some other language changes. But all in all, again, I think it was a difficult process, a very time-consuming process, but a very sort of, very respectful process, and again, I would recommend the school committee vote to approve this three-year contract moving forward. And again, I do want to thank Ms. Monaco, Ms. Wojcik, and again, Ms. Simon prior to Ms. Wojcik's joining the negotiation group, because it is a tremendous amount of time, and, and it's, it's a foundational part of having the schools operate, so thank you very much.
Okay, is there a motion to, to ratify the memorandum of agreement between Burlington Educators Association, Unit A teachers, and the Burlington School Committee?
So moved. Second.
Okay. So moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Eric, do you want to summarize the last, the working group piece?
Oh.
For the folks at home?
Yes, thank you. So we also committed to looking at our elementary schedule, because that was a real, it was a challenging topic in terms of length of school day and collaboration time that teachers were requesting, and the bargaining table is a very difficult place to have those conversations, so what we committed to was putting together an elementary schedule, sort of study group, and that'll include principals, it'll include teachers, it'll include specialists, it'll include other members, and we're really going to look at some model schedules from our area and look at our schedules, sort of what we currently have, and really try to commit to having a conversation about what changes could be made. We haven't really looked at the elementary schedule holistically in a very long period of time, and it's very hard to make one change without impact, like, it's hard to make a small change in a schedule, because every minute is accounted for, and it, it sort of triggers a lot of everything else, so you almost have, you're almost forced to look at it as a, you know, as a whole, if we're going to look at that. Any changes would need to be approved by the school committee and by the majority of teachers, so I just think it's a commitment to really go back and, and look at that, and, and that would include sort of minutes for literacy per week, minutes of lunch, minutes for lunch. Again, there's only so many minutes in a day, and I hate reducing school day to minutes, but at some point, we have to create a schedule that works, and that schedule not only has to work for teaching and learning, but here in Burlington, transportation plays a role in that as well, so it's, it's all connected. But Ms. Maser, thank you for putting, pointing that out. We're, we're going to have that conversation starting in September, and then bring sort of our, some of our thinking back to the full committee as we move forward. And then, again, how many minutes of science instruction a week, how many minutes of math, so we can have those, we can have some of those conversations.
There any other questions? Hearing none. Put the motion to a vote. All those in favor of approving the ratification of this agreement, please say aye.
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 Say anyone opposed. That's unanimous. Okay. And I'll sign them while you go on to the next one.
Yes, ma'am. The Unit D is also under the umbrella of the Burlington Educators Association, and also under the umbrella of the Massachusetts Teachers Association, and ultimately, the NEA, so that's sort of the group. The Unit D contract is a 200-day contract, the Unit A contract is a 187-day contract. The 200-day contract is typically for, we have different groups that are in it, we have department heads, so what the high school are in Unit D, we have team chairs that are in Unit D, we have the elementary assistant principals are in Unit D, and our nurse leaders in Unit D. So what separates Unit D from Unit A is that they evaluate. Historically, prior to my arrival, they were in the same unit as Unit A, and the sort of Department of Ed, DSC, and I think some other group felt like they needed to be in a separate unit if they were going to be evaluating, and so they all voted to sort of leave Unit A and create Unit D, even though they're in the same umbrella. So one of the biggest things we talked about is, when I first got here, the Unit D contract was just really the Unit A contract with A scratched out and D written in, and their working conditions are, are very different. So again, we're committing this fall to sort of rewriting the, the Unit D language, and again, Darren is going to help us do that, so it really becomes a sort of a separate contract language and not just an extension of Unit A. When we first did this, you have to realize that every Unit D member, like, on Monday was a Unit A member, and all of a sudden, they became a Unit D member. So we're at the point now where many of the Unit D members who were hired into Unit D positions don't have a history in Unit A, and they want to see sort of separate working condition language that, that makes sense for them. Again, the financial package was a very similar COLA, which is a 3.5, 3.5, 3.5, over the next three fiscal years, again, a similar expansion of, of family leave and bereavement language that, that we included in, in, in Unit A. And then a commitment to, there are 13 additional days, if people have used all of those 13 additional days, and we still need them to do some summer work, that we would post that summer work and pay them for their time over the summer. We needed to clarify that. So, so again, I would recommend the committee approve the memorandum of agreement with the Unit D Association.
Is there a motion to, to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Burlington Educators Association, Unit D, and the Burlington School Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions?
I have one question. Just, social media policy is blank. Did they not ratify it?
No, they did. They, they approved that. So again, I should have mentioned that as well, the social media policy was included in the memorandum of both Unit A and Unit D, so.
Right.
The policy had been approved by the school committee. Darren said we had, also had to follow up to make sure it was bargained, so it was, again, successfully bargained with both those units.
Could we have an agenda item maybe at the next meeting on the social media policy? Just a brief discussion about implementing it and training teachers about what it says, because it's a pretty important policy.
We can, and maybe we should also bring up the, there's a policy you all passed called Teaching of Controversial Topics, or something like that, going into a national election might be something that we also just want to highlight, so if I can do both of those, that would be okay?
Okay, it's been... Okay, it's removed and seconded to approve the memorandum of agreement for Unit D. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That's unanimous.
And again, just a thank you for both of those. And the thanks, I thank the association, I thank the committee members. I did not thank Nicole Kasha, and Nicole is very active in the negotiations, often behind the scenes because she's calculating. Many of the proposals have a cost to them, and Nicole is the one that really tries to make sure that the, again, the proposals are sustainable and affordable moving forward. So Nicole, thank you for all your work.
I swear you said I do not thank Nicole.
Huh?
Did you say you do not?
Oh, I do thank Nicole. Thank you very much, Nicole. If I said that, I, that was a, that was a big mistake. So Nicole, thank you.
I didn't think her earlier.
I didn't thank her early. That's correct. So that's, thank you.
All right.
Get myself in trouble.
Memorandum of agreement for successor collective bargaining agreement between the AFSMI Mass State Council 93, local 1703 Burlington Clerical Unit, and the Burlington, Massachusetts School Committee.
Thank you. And again, Bob and Nicole spent the primary amount of time with this unit. I kind of just came in at the end to mess things up. So Bob, thank you very much. The clerical unit at some point in their past had bargained two salary scales. So there were people doing the exact same job in the exact same group, but depending on when they were hired, they could be making a lot, or less than someone else doing the exact same job. So a big ask of the union was to sort of clean up that historical challenge and to put everyone on a single scale. So I think we successfully created an on-ramp that allows everyone to eventually be on the same scale. We couldn't fix everything immediately, but over the next few fiscal years, we'll be paying everyone the same for doing the same job, and I think it'll clarify things in the union. Bob, were there any other major clarifications or holidays or things like that?
There were no working condition changes, really. There were two cleanups, one in vacation language and how it gets used and either carried over. But definitely a use it or lose it policy was, was, was voted into the MOA. And also there was some language regarding the visitor access system and how front office staff becomes an important member of our security team by actions that they view people coming in and how they assign people into the building. So really just clarifying some of that language, which they agreed to as well. And also like as other members, the financial package was three and a half, three and a half, three and a half. So very consistent across all unions.
So again, my recommendation is the committee, again, this was ratified by the, by the clerical union. So my recommendations, committee ratify this, this contract, this memorandum of agreement.
Okay, is there a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement?
So moved.
Between what I said before. Marion, did you get all that before? Do you want me to read it again?
No.
Don't read it, okay. Basically between the clerical unit and the, and the school committee. Okay.
Second.
All right. Any discussion, any questions?
I just have one question. Can you elaborate so that we're removing the visual recognitions of persons seeking access from the list of duties not covered? So we're meaning that this is, that is a job duty of the clerical staff now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's actually being brought up to the list of duties that the clerical unit will do.
Okay.
Was visual recognition of visitors.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Okay.
And again, I believe, well, again, that's the concludes, I think, this, the five, five of the unions have now been ratified. I think the sixth is, is, will be at a future meeting, but the sixth is sort of fine. And so thank you very much. It's always a challenging, both a fiscal year and a, and a time-wise to, to get all the contracts settled. And again, I think the tone was, again, positive, professional and forward-thinking in, in all of our bargaining sessions. And I think that's because the community has supported our, our contracts and our staff very generously over the years. I think they really appreciate working here. And I think there's a cost to a lot of labor unrest and happy that we avoided that. So again, please, thank you very much for all of your support.
Before I bring Nikki up, I'm going to interrupt our flow of learning equity and thriving Leave STEM for a few minutes. Is that all right?
We can, we're going to be a few minutes. So do you want to bring Nikki up next?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I just wanted to say before she comes up that after talking to Melissa today, all five of us are going to do the Burlington Feud for fundraising for People Helping People. So I think that's very exciting that we'll all be there together and feuding just like a family.
I'm just there as window dressing.
We can be feuding like any family. Okay, Nikki, you want to come up?
That'll be in the bus tomorrow.
Yeah. That's what I figured, that's why I said it.
Do you need a third chair?
There's another one right there if you want to.
Everybody, thanks for having us. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Nice to see you. So I just wanted to come here in front of you. We're kind of traveling to all the different boards and commissions tonight specifically, literally. We just came from the Board of Health, but we'll also be going to the Select Board and other, other boards and commissions as well. Just to officially introduce Burlington Buzz, I know everybody here in this room knows what Burlington Buzz is. We've been around for two and a half years now. But we really want to sort of establish ourselves in the record of, you know, this is a news publication that serves our town. And then also I wanted to introduce a partnership with an organization called Vote Light, which many of you have already heard of, but many probably haven't. And David Masher from Vote Light is here with me to just kind of explain who they are, what they do, and what benefits our town and school committee and the citizens can take from that partnership. I think Mr. Kuna has a slide deck to show. And as he gets that up, I'll just say, you know, a lot of you know this already, but in 2022, there was an election, if you, all the way back? Is that all the way back? Okay, there we go. Yeah, that's perfect. Okay, thank you. And back in 2022, we had an election coming up. I found myself as a, and it's citizen, but not a very engaged citizen, wondering sort of, what's the election about? Who's voting? What's at stake? Or sorry, who's running? What's at stake? What even are all of these commissions and boards and what do they do? And so I kind of set out to educate myself, and in doing that, I sort of fell into this idea of, oh, I can do some explanatory journalism, and this is actually something that fits really well for me. And so I've been doing that for, ever since. The rest is history, I guess. So what we're really about is community connection and curiosity. As you very well know, in 2022, it was a really, really difficult political climate. Not that it's any better today, but there's, there's a lot of willingness to sort of dismiss somebody else because they feel one way or the other, act one way or the other, rather than getting to know people and asking questions. And so curiosity is really at the foundation of what started Burlington Buzz in the first place. And I try to approach everything that we do with a curiosity of, you know, what's going on, what's at stake, who is involved, what's the history, and really do a good job of explaining that. So we were founded in February 2022. As of today, we have about almost 1,800 newsletter subscribers. So that's people who receive the email every day. Our population is about 26,500, but households are about 10,000. So if you, there's about 15% of households are subscribing to Burlington Buzz each day, which is great, but of course we always want more because I want everybody in town to be engaged and informed. As of this, before this past year, our average local election turnout was about 15%. Many of you know this year it was more closer to 23%. And I will like take off my humble hat for a second and just say, I think that probably has a little bit to do with the fact that people are more informed now. There are also, there were contested races, more people running, and a lot of people said, like, I'm running because I saw the opportunity in the buzz. And so that makes me feel good. It also makes, it makes me realize like how sorely this kind of communication platform was missing from, from our town's sort of social discourse. Yeah. Right now, we have obviously the newsletter, which most of you are familiar with, that's our primary product. We also have our seasonal guides. Our Spring and Summer Guide is out right now, and you can play a fun little bingo game. It sounds like you all like to play games, so you can pick up your digital copy of the bingo card and see what you can mark off there. And then we just launched a website, a new website in March, and it's going really well with that. The other thing we do is in-person events. So I know you all know about the Civic Expo, and many of you were there in January. We're going to have another one this coming January, we're already planning it, so I'm very excited about that. And really, again, all we want to do is bring people together and inform them. And so that's, that's sort of what we're doing right now. So what we've accomplished in the last couple of years has been pretty, pretty cool. I'm pretty proud of it. We won a community engagement award last year. This year, we just found out that we're a finalist for the Product of the Year Award for the, the Spring and Summer Guide to Burlington. That's going to be announced in September at the News Sustainability Summit. I'm going to be a panelist at that summit for one of the sessions, also a community ambassador. I work with Lion Publishers to support other news producers. And I've been in a few startup labs, sustainability lab, and then I just started what's called Transformation Tech, which is a program that is a 72-day sprint to establish a new revenue stream for a news organization. So all of that said, I'm really, really proud and honored to be doing the work that I do in, with serving the community and connecting people with their local representatives and informing them about the history and the, and the present and the future of the decisions that they're making at the ballot box. And, you know, coming in and talking to folks like you on a regular basis. And that, that connection, I feel like, is fostered really well by this platform, Vote Light. So we've been partnering with Vote Lights for a year now, I guess July is our anniversary. And this is a civic engagement platform that I'm going to let David sort of roll with. He'll explain everything about that to you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Nikki. Obviously, it's great that we're going on a year here to support you. So my name's David Masher. I'm actually from Raleigh, up the road there, a little bucolic town, whatever, with greenheads right now tormenting us. But we, my partner and I, Jeff, who's in New Jersey, we found that we needed to do something about civic engagement. There just wasn't enough civic engagement. I was an elected official in Raleigh for a bunch of years, and I saw it many times where I'd see people on the baseball field. I was also a coach. And they'd say, hey, we heard about there's a new sports, you know, facility turf field, and it wouldn't come through the, you know, the town meeting or what have you, wouldn't get put on the ballot. Like, what happened? I'm like, well, I didn't see you there. So it just became very apparent after three or four years of seeing this that there was just not enough civic engagement. So we created Vote Light. And Vote Light is really a platform that talks about connecting different user groups or personas in the town. So you've got voters, politicians, city, you know, town offices and media organizations and groups that can all, you know, raise issues, have their voice put out there, and people can vote on it. They can put an opinion, it can become a repository for a specific issue so people can keep going back and, and getting more information on that. You know, the, the thing that's important for us to realize is it, it's not every four years or every two years. Things are happening every day in a town that, or a city, what have you, or anywhere that people need to be aware of and need to be able to voice their opinion. So, you know, partnering with Nikki has been great, great content, a way to extend her reach and help us with our civic engagement dream is to connect with media organizations, right? If you were able to get, say, the town of Burlington, to get the town clerk on there and even the elected officials, then they would see a dashboard. Can we go to the next slide? I'm not sure, I'm probably jumping ahead, but this sort of shows the different user groups and how they all connect. Yeah, that's fine. How they all connect. But the idea is, is, you know, if you wanted to put an issue out, like we had one in my town where they're putting in a new intersection, and, you know, there was different traffic studies, and it was, some people were for it, some people weren't for it. Well, this became a place where people could go and, you know, vote their opinion. You know, you can only vote once, and you can only vote in the district you're registered in. So when you register for Vote Light, you actually are filtered down so that you, if you're Burlington, you can't vote on my traffic intersection in Raleigh. You can vote on things that happen in your, in Essex County, if you're in Essex County or Massachusetts or the United States, right? If the votes or the issues are at that level, but you're not going to get people voting out of turn. You know, one of the last meetings we were at, they asked about security and all that. So we do multi-factor authentication. You know, we wipe your data after you're brought in. We just keep your username and your password so you can access the content, but, you know, we're trying to keep it as, you know, clean as possible, if you will. Anyway, that being said, you know, if you can go to the next slide, that would be fabulous. So one of the things we've seen, and so I've been in this, the dot-com industry or SaaS, whatever you want to call it, for my whole life, and these kind of numbers are huge. 38% of the people are voting, have signed up, they've gone through the, and we're not that, you know, there's not too many issues to getting into our platform, but it's not like a single click. We do validate you. So for someone to go through that and to get these numbers, that's huge. It sort of proves the sort of dream that we have that people need to be informed. You know, if you're a single parent, or you've got two jobs, or you have three kids, or, and these are all situations I'm fully aware of, you might not have time to be as informed as one would like. So in Vote Light, if you're interested in an issue, you can be alerted that, hey, there's something coming up, you should, you know, see the new traffic plan, or there's going to be a vote at Town Hall, so make sure you show up. So, you know, that, this to me is, is fabulous. We're an early-stage startup. We, you know, working with Nikki for just a year. We've got the Granite State News Collaborative, there are like 20 newspapers, that we're almost about to work with them, and we've got two locations in New Jersey. And all of them sort of have the same result where they're, people are very responsive to it. So anyway, if you can go to the next slide, that would be great. Okay, so if you were an elected official in the town, or you're the town clerk or what have you, you've got a dashboard, so you can see what's going on, how many people are voting, how many people are on the platform, what are the most, you know, hot issues, if you will. You know, in, in this world that we live in now, you've got other platforms like Facebook, which is like friends and family. You've got LinkedIn, which is like, you know, employees and employers. You've got X and Twitter, which I don't know what that is anymore. But they really, I felt there really wasn't a place for people to connect with their government and only their, their government. So in short, that's the whole focus. We're just trying to become a tool for any of those user, five user groups to become more informed and more civically engaged. And yeah, that's pretty much, pretty much it.
And I know some of you have already voted on certain issues that we've had in the buzz. Today, in preparation for these meetings, I added an issue, very, very contentious, town common sign issue. So if you wanted to actually check out the platform and kind of test drive it and see how it works as a voter, you can do that if you're a resident of Burlington. If you want to sign up as an elected official, five of you could do that. And if you have any questions or issues, because I know, I know Ms. Monaco, I think you tried to sign up, it had some tech issues, we can get you all squared away with that as well. And really, the, you know, the whole idea is that we're going to continue, this is going to be in the buzz tomorrow, and, you know, we'll continue bringing this up into the public awareness. We try to focus on things like warrant articles, as town meeting approaches, and if you have any ideas too, for just things that you'd like to get public input about, if it sort of is in line with the kinds of things that, the issues is what they're called on Vote Light, that we would bring up, we would love to do that and just really get people using the system involved and engaged.
Yeah, there's just one last slide, which is...
Yeah, it's really like, yeah, how you can help, right? So with the buzz specifically, I know all of you do this already, but please share to anybody you know who lives in Burlington. I would very much love to wake up tomorrow morning with 1,000 new subscribers. It's not going to happen, but the, it spreads through word of mouth, right? And so if you, if you share it, you know, people will, will see it and they'll see the value in it, which is, which is awesome. And then the other thing that you can do is if you know of an event, like, I don't know, Family Feud with People Helping People, just pop that onto the event calendar if it's not there already. It's, it's a really straightforward process and, or you can email me too, and maybe we'll do it for you. do it for you. But, you know, those two things really are just keeping people aware who we are, what we do and connected, really, is the key. And as far as Vote Light, yeah, please, share issues with me and then share issues once they've been created on the platform with your, your people that you care about in Burlington and then to help out Vote Light.
Support Nikki. No, seriously, because, you know, there is a bit of a news desert that's out there and, you know, things that she's doing are going to make a large difference in all of this. And for us, we're a tool. We're a tool for anyone to use. You know, right now, we're doing pilots. We're not charging anybody anything. It's really just to prove our proof of concept, something that I deeply believe in, as my partner, Jeff, does as well and all of us Claire back here as well. So yeah, and get on the platform, you know, and be heard, really. That's it, yeah.
Any questions? Anybody? Any discussion or questions, Nikki?
Thanks for the presentation. I'm a subscriber to both and have been on both platforms. It's pretty awesome.
Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you for coming and talking to us tonight.
Thank you. David has some...
I just have a couple little, I'll leave them here for you guys. There's only a few because we've been giving them out, unfortunately. But it's just a case study of how we have worked with Nikki and, you know, the success that we've had there. But, but thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you. The next item is the STEM Accelerator Pilot Discussion.
I want to invite Shereen Torrell. Come on up, Shereen. We'll have a conversation.
Sorry to make you wait.
That's all right. And then just before I get going, I got a text from someone. We were using the acronym E S Y and we're trying to get out of the habit of using E S, or acronyms. So that's Extended School Year. That's our summer programming that happens. We also have Summer Enrichment that goes along with our Extended School Year. And we have some remarkable people sort of running that. I call them our summer principals and that's Kristin DiMarco, Chrissy McNeil and Nicole Mondello. So they're doing a great job. So E S Y is Extended School Year Programming. So, Shereen, thank you for coming out on July, July 23rd. Do you know all the committee members? I know you know Jeremy, Megan Novoycek, Melissa Massardo, Ms. Chris Monaco and Catherine Bond. So you know everybody? All right. So Shereen is our, one of our computer science teachers, but a little bit more than that. And actually, I met Shereen, we were on Deval Patrick's Appointed Committee to what? To expand the digital literacy, computer science standards in the state?
Right, yeah, K through 12. We were part of a panel.
We were part of a panel and we were appointed by Governor Patrick. And you were, you were working for Mas T L C at the time?
Yeah, so before I was here, I was the Ed Foundation Director for Mas T L C, which is Technology Leadership Council. So it's 600 tech companies are part of this consortium.
So Shereen and I, as part of this panel, we would talk about technology a lot and she mentioned it about sort of going to the source, which was public schools. And convinced, what talked you into being in the classroom a little bit as a, as a career shift? So she came to Burlington as a computer science teacher about, what, six or seven years now?
Yeah, yeah. And I've had great students.
And, but again, the reason I bring up the history is Shereen's background is really connecting with companies and creating those opportunities. And she really brought, I think, an innovative way to get our students into those companies. And would you just do a moment on the flipped internship, just so everyone has the same foundational sort of knowledge of what's going on?
Sure, and I could put Jeremy on the spot after. But so the idea is that we want kids to have work-related experiences, but in technology companies, it's really hard to place large numbers of students. I know we have some kids working here in IT, but to place like 40 or 50 kids is really challenging. So working with minor, we came up with a model where we would have kids working here in the school, doing capstone projects under the supervision of teachers. We also hire college students to help them. And then the way the industry are involved and wonderful mentors like Jeremy is that we bring industry to Burlington High School. So each student has a mentor. Students meet either individually or in groups of two or three with their mentors and they meet weekly. And they have a list of topics that they can stick with if they want to. And it's just been fantastic. It's been phenomenal, I think, the impact on the kids. They all get so much out of it. It's not just learning about technology, but talking to mentors. They learn about life choices and how to manage their time and, you know, what are the different things that their mentors went through. So it's awesome. It's a great opportunity for them to learn from other people, practice networking skills. And now they have somebody in the outside world at all of the, all these different companies that they can access when they're job hunting. So the kids are part of the community. All the kids have mentors, so we're really broadening their social capital. And what we found is there's just an opportunity and appetite to do so much more of this. There's so many companies we haven't even tapped into. There's opportunities, I think, to raise private money, to do more tours, to have more things come in here and really to expand the program into something for the summer. We've been doing this as the fourth quarter senior internship and it's really tough to juggle with APs and everything else going on with kids. But again, there's an appetite for something in the summer. We have, this summer, we're offering about 70 kids different opportunities, either paid or they're either getting paid to participate or they're free. And, you know, we could have more students participating, we could do more, so...
Could you just speak about those summer experiences a little bit? I know one is through UMass Lowell, which we started last year.
Right, so one of them is a camp, an engineering camp at UMass Lowell to, oh, is it off? Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. To introduce students to different types of engineering. They get to go on campus. They have the lunch buffet, which is a big draw. And then they, they come back here and they do a project and they do a little showcase. And again, the kids love it and it's a great introduction to engineering. And to be on the college campus is really important for so many of these students. The other thing we're doing is we're having a company called In Spirit AI. The kids are going to be doing, learning Python and doing machine learning and AI projects in healthcare and transportation and other disciplines. It's two weeks and we had a lot of interest in that, so we're running that. And the kids can go for free. Normally, they'd have to pay $1,200, so that's something we're providing. We also have nine students that we're paying from another grant to actually work with the elementary school kids and a robotics camp. So we have a grant to pay for that. Then we placed about seven kids and another paid internship opportunity through Work-Based Learning Associates. That's a free opportunity that we were able to connect students to. And then finally, we have three kids doing free programs for Mas Robotics. So I feel like we're getting the word out, we're getting kids to participate, but, but we can do more. You know, we're getting the kids that are motivated, so it's like, how do we also get the, the bigger body of kids who may not, this might not be top of mind, but who could really benefit.
So it's really challenging to do all this work, to do all this connecting and coordinating and teach as well. So really what we're proposing is we've been reducing Shereen's teaching load sort of through the years, but what I really wanted to talk to the committee about in, is reassign all of her classes, not eliminate the classes, but reassign her classes and let Shereen sort of expand these opportunities, pursue more opportunities with business and just think about this a little bit differently. I want to really take advantage of where we are geographically with the companies that surround us, with Shereen's background in forming those relationships and expand those opportunities. Because what's happening is words getting out, districts are hearing about our flipped internships and Shereen, and they're inviting her to their districts and she's beginning now to coordinate this for other districts and they're, they're writing her into grants. And, and we feel like we can write those grants and do, and if we want to expand the model, we can certainly do that, but we can do that from here. So the proposal that I'd really like to talk with the committee about, and, and again, I'm not sure I necessarily need approval, but I just want to have the conversation and get your thoughts on it, is we have an international revolving account. We've been taking in international students for, I think, about 10 or 12 years. We do have a balance in that Nicole has said this would be an appropriate expenditure out of that. And I'd really like to create some seed money to bring someone in to cover the sections that Shereen is currently teaching and give Shereen an opportunity to potentially hire someone to work with her, to explore these opportunities and to expand the summer programming that we talked about, to really create sort of a month-long STEM acceleration experience where we can reach more kids, not only the kids that we're currently covering, but more underrepresented students. Always a draw to have more women in some of these STEM opportunities, young women in these STEM opportunities. And I just think it's really challenging when doing that and trying to teach at the same time. Mr. Sullivan, I talked to Mark, is very, very supportive of this. And I just think we need to think a little bit outside of the traditional way that we've been sort of teaching this. The kids who are participating are very self-directed. Many of them have accomplished all of their state graduation requirements by the end of sophomore year. There are lots of studies that say many students are bored in high school, sort of they're checking the box and, and we're sort of looking for partners to do this. So we have a grant-writing partner who I think we would like to pursue some National Science Foundation grants. The former commissioner is also now interested and working with us and so is the Pat Tutwiler, who's the Secretary of Education. So we're going to be meeting with Pat, sorry, Secretary Tutwiler, to talk about expanding this flip model because, again, other districts are seeing the need and wanting to have these opportunities. Typically, we would use grants to initiate an idea and then incorporate the grant into our operating budget. The challenge with doing that for us is a lot of the money that's out there is going through different agencies like E D C and they're taking a huge percentage of the money off the top or because our title, our poverty numbers aren't necessarily reflective of a gateway city or a high-needs place that where you don't have access to that grant money right away. We feel like if we have an established program and we write the grant about expanding that program, reaching more students and then even potentially looking at expanding that opportunity outside of Burlington, that we would have more success. So we met today, you asked me, Shereen, what do I think, what would be sort of a success? Would be, again, that we would have expanded opportunities with more companies, that we would reach more students and that we would have sort of a, almost like a four-week, a robust computer science engineering experience for many different students available, say for the month of July. We'd focus on juniors, I think, to start and then really look to expand that moving forward. So that would be sort of what I would like you all to think about. We can certainly come in and talk about what, what's going on and what the progress is. And again, my intention would be to fund this from a revolving fund. And again, that would be to hire, I think we have to cover, what, three classes at the high school? So again, and then, and then just give Shereen some flexibility to do, expand the incredible work that she's doing already. So that's really what I'd like to make sure that you're sort of all aware of, that we're, that we're working on, but you'll see that in the monthly expense report. You'll see, if you see a big chunk of money, I just wanted you to know what we were sort of expending that on.
And I, well, I think our goal would be to raise grant money and private money to actually, I think there's a lot of opportunities. As Dr. Conti said, a group asked me to run the program in Chelsea and Microsoft loved it and is funding them, wants to fund that group, $50,000 to run it again next year. And I'm like, I was like, oh, let's fund us. So I think there are opportunities. We have good relationships with so many companies around here. Again, we haven't even scratched the surface, right? I think there's more we could do.
Any questions? Jeremy?
Sorry, if I was to make a comment, I'm going to get myself boxed here because I'm obviously very passionate about this. First of all, Shereen, thank you for coming out and talking about this. I can't sing her praises enough. The amount of effort, time and dedication she puts into these students is amazing. The work she does is truly transformative and I think, you know, I see this being a little bit bigger than maybe even your thing to Dr. Conti. I think we codify this in the task org relationship to have it feed into, you know, what Dr. Chen's doing with curriculum improvement and this kind of, Shereen be like the focal point for innovation acceleration within the district, right? Because, you know, iPads are great a few years ago, but I think this is the next big thing is giving the kids the requisite skills earlier on and being able to flow it down to the younger grades for that. But again, we need the money to start doing that, so I think using the capital you found is appropriate, but then giving Shereen the latitude to engage with private corporations to raise some more of that funding, to do the proof of concept for the model and then we can kind of codify it into the operating budget as one of those things that, you know, just to show that, again, we are on the cutting edge of education here in Burlington and giving kids the skills they need to be successful in 21st century in life too.
Other comments?
I just had a quick one. I think one of the draws for some of the international students is some of these programs, so I think it's an appropriate use of funds. I'm fine with that.
I'm super excited about this as well. It's kind of funny, I didn't realize, I think, when Elizabeth had you, that one of your first years, I think, teaching here. I just realized that.
Yeah, first year for Elizabeth.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm just so excited to see how, you know, I guess you've developed within the district and excited about these additional opportunities and certainly, you know, me working at Raffey, potentially, maybe I can connect you with someone there too. We do a lot of internships over the summer of college students coming in, but this is something different that they might consider, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Megan?
I want to thank you, Shereen, for all the work that you're doing. I've heard wonderful things about, you know, the reverse, the flipped internship and a lot of students really enjoy being a part of that. So I just want to thank you for the work and bring this forward to the committee and I'm very excited about it.
Oh, thanks.
I think you know, computer science is, yeah, I mean, my whole family is into computer science, my husband, my kids, my grandkids. Anyway, it sounds great. I would like, as you go forward, I would like more detail, like, where's the time coming from for the kids? What are they, you know, when are they meeting with people? What are they doing? What are their projects? How do you fund after you use the seed money? You know, the, the technical details of exactly what we're doing and exactly how we're paying for it, but I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea.
I just want to plug. So I can kind of speak to what we're doing now. Currently, the mentors come in, they bring their technical expertise. The, you know, for instance, my group this year was on a drone competition, so as part of their drone competition, they had to make a project, make a project schedule, build all the components required to fill out the competition events for their drone competition. So again, it gave them leadership management and technical skills because they had to write the program to fly the drone, they had to build the drone, they had to build parts for their drone. So again, these touch on several different educational areas and aspect that the school does and it's, it really is truly a capstone event where they're pulling in all the things they've learned throughout the year with different computer science modalities and showing that they've actually learned something, they're producing something and competing against other districts and succeeding pretty well, actually, quite frankly.
Is, is there a time during the school day or is it after school?
So, so for the flipped internship, we did it their fourth quarter senior year. So students could opt to go out and do an internship or this was an option that they could stay in school. We just, I think there's an opportunity to have a more robust experience for juniors and I think it would be great to do it with juniors because after that, they need to apply to colleges and, you know, this is a great opportunity for them to think about, do I want to apply to the School of Science or School of Engineering or School of Liter- whatever it is? So I think junior year would be good. And then in terms of other career-related outings and speakers, we do a lot during the flex blocks, so that's been really helpful. Of course, we bring people in during... Of course, we bring people in during classrooms. And then we do do field trips, although we try to, you know, balance that experience going out with they have to stay in school and get all their work done.
So this might actually take the place of a course.
I mean, we've talked about doing a course that's, you know, focused on career, like Capstone.
My concern about the time is just that I know how busy the kids are, how full their schedules are. And I'm just wondering, when do they have time to do it?
Oh, so the flex block works well for the speakers, so it doesn't take any extra time out of their day. And we don't do too many, we're pretty conscious of their need to use flex block to meet with teachers. And then the flipped internship is that fourth quarter that they're released from classes anyways.
Right. And for juniors?
Well, we would do it in the summer, so.
That's perfect.
Yeah, and then we have been able to get state grants to pay students. That's the other thing, is all the kids doing projects got paid. We don't know how long that will last, but as long as it's going on, we're going to get the grant.
I think it's wonderful, and especially if, I mean, the kids would love doing it during the summer.
And that's addition to the pathways grants? And we have two of those, right, for computer science and for business?
Right, so we have two state-funded now career pathways. So we should be getting, the total grant amount will be $75,000 this year. And that's to support the computer science and the business pathways. So we're going to use some of that money to help develop career exploration and assessment activities for kids that would happen during flex blocks once a month. And then help to support the internship and the Capstone.
Great.
And then, again, Shereen, I'm sort of repeating some of what we've discussed before is the, when we're not in control of the grant structure, again, you were partnering with Chelsea to do what, data visualization?
Yeah, we did, in Chelsea, we did the flipped internship. We did it after school there, which was challenging, I will say, for the kids. But we had a focus in data science, and I had 10 data scientists from Takeda Pharmaceuticals volunteer to help these kids. It was amazing. And again, it's easy to get the volunteers, but this whole program was funded from a nonprofit that had gotten a grant from Microsoft. And Microsoft loved it, and they want to fund it again, and...
And the NSF grant, though, that you worked on with EDC, that was sort of the start to the data science, right?
Right, so we received, yeah, there was a million dollar, I was telling Dr. Conti, there was a million-dollar grant to bring data science into our school and into Chelsea. And EDC and the other people involved received most of the money. The schools really received less than $100,000. So we could write the NSF grants ourself. And I just went to a conference this past week where they had people from NSF who actually are hired to help people write grants. So like, they'll hold our hand and help us.
Great.
So I sort of, but it's almost impossible to do that in lesson plan and do the other sort of work that's required. So I think we need to, as we discussed today, spend a little to hopefully bring in more money. And again, that's just a model that people sometimes aren't comfortable with. So I just wanted to make sure I was very transparent and open, and I do think the benefits are here. I do think there's certainly a proven track record of high-quality experiences for our kids. And I'm really excited about this opportunity. There'll be no, just because of some of the recent conversations we have, there's going to be no reductions in sections or opportunity. We're going to cover those classes. We're just really making sure that Shereen has some time and resources to expand her efforts, which have been stellar so far. So that's what we're asking, so. So Shereen, again, I don't, I'm not sure I need a vote, but I think clearly if I took one, it would be unanimous, which is great. And I just think we have to talk about what the sort of structure would be moving forward. And I don't want to intrude, have you back every meeting, but every, we'll maybe have some check-ins once in a while and bring you back to the committee, and we can talk about where we're going.
Yeah, and we could provide some of the detail you were looking for in terms of the types of projects and types of people involved. So I have all of that. I can provide it through email even, so you have it.
Thank you. I would just like to suggest that at the next meeting, like, this is kind of like an introduction. At the next meeting, you ask for a vote for the, for the total project, just so that everyone in the public gets a chance to know that we're supportive and have actually voted this into place.
I will do so.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Jeremy, thank you for being a stellar mentor.
I don't know about all that. I just help the kids out and give them some ideas.
No, I mean...
He's in dressing.
He's not just a pretty face. But no, I think, you know, just one of the things that I remember you talked to the kids about is least viable product. They were struggling with how to get everything done. And you talked about, like, in the real world, you have to get, what do you have to do to meet the customer need? Anything else is extra. And they were like, oh, yeah, so, thank you.
Thanks, Shereen.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Shereen.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is facilities finance, draft, long-term facilities planning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I don't see this as a final conversation. I really see this as a starting conversation, and we might need to, I think we will need to have more conversations about this. But Bob, I really wanted to sort of turn over this format to you. And it's really, I think, a, it's about establishing a communication tool and a practice to make sure that we are trying to project our future capital needs as clearly and transparently as possible. So again, this is, in my mind, not a finished product, but it's sort of an introduction of a format. And we're sort of going to be looking for some feedback, but we're going to continue to have this evolve. So hopefully to avoid some surprises. So Bob, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Conti, and also we'll introduce, so obviously Jeremy Brooks into this conversation as well, too. I think he's been a strong proponent as to putting this together. And I think the impetus behind this definitely is, is that we have looked at the 10-year capital plan in conjunction with the town in multiple ways since I've been here and even prior to that. One, it's been looked at as a wish list, and then, second, it's been looked at as also what actually happens. So it gets updated year to year. Now, this may also be considered a wish list in some eyes as well, too. But a lot of this that's in place is a lot of wear and tear. So we know that roofs are going to go, we know that bathrooms need to be refinished, we know that HVAC systems need to be rehabbed. Of course, there's going to be things that come up that we don't know about yet, five years, six years down the road. And we'll have to fill those in. But for us to forget, let's say, roof, for example, since we just did the roof here at the high school, let's say, eight years ago, we kind of put that on the back of our mind, and then all of a sudden, 10 years, 12 years, 13 years goes by, and now we have to remember to put that. So putting something like this in place makes a lot of sense. So for a second example would be varsity field. While we have the master plan that we put together for athletic fields, recreation department is putting together their master plan as well, too. So we will have multiple places that will have some schedules. But what this will allow us to do is say, varsity field was done now. We're projecting, let's say, 10 years, go out 10 years and put that in place now. Then we don't have to forget about it and try to remember in nine years, oh, yes, now we need to put that back on the list. And that's an example that may or may not fall off the 10-year capital plan on the town side, but definitely would be recorded here on the long-term capital plan. So what's in front of you tonight and what's shared with you in the documents, of course, is a draft. There's been some discussions back and forth about putting today's dollar figures on there, and that is something that we can add. I think this would be viewed similar to the current 10-year capital plan as this is a living document, not a one-and-done. So this would definitely be growing all the time, growing every year, maybe not week to week. But I'll forget things, I'll remember things, you all remember things, and we'll add it to it. And then we'll try to be current with capital projects that happened, you know, in that year. Those will be reflected in anything that has some follow-ups to them. We'll calculate those out for the timeframe needed and add them back into the plan. Of course, I just want to point out a couple of items. You know, if you look at Fox Hill, you'll see new building with a question mark, right? So we don't know the exact date. Obviously, we would still have to get funding through town meeting. You'll see some other projects that say feasibility study, some new building projects. So we still have to live in a mindset that these projects may happen, but they may not happen. And they may not happen in a timeframe or block that they're listed on in the year that they're associated with. So again, this will be a living document. I know you've just seen this recently, so I'm sure you're going to have to digest it. But if anyone else has comments or questions, I'd love to hear them. And then obviously follow up after the meeting with more questions and comments. And, you know, we will bring this back to future meetings, definitely.
Madam Chair, may I just follow up with that? So the, this committee, certainly over the last 20 years, starting in 2007. So again, I started in 2008. So in 2007, they commissioned a firm to do a buildings master plan. And that's really where they prioritized the memorial school to be sort of the first to be replaced. And then they talked about the middle school, and then they had the high school next, and then Fox Hill. And sort of that was the order of things. But they went through all the buildings, they went through all the systems, and that sort of informed the capital plan in prior years. That was redone in 2017. And so we're now at that 10-year mark again. I can't believe it's 2024. We obviously have sort of two feasibility studies underway that were reflected in that master plan. But it may be something that the committee would want to consider for a warrant for May. This coming May is to do, again, another facilities master plan. Would you find that helpful to go through the buildings again? Or would it be redundant at this point, or if we have a new Fox Hill, I mean, Fox Hill underway? I don't really know because things have changed over those 20 years because now the state, the MSBA, actually sends out teams to do building evaluations of every school in the Commonwealth anyway. So they're doing that work already. But if an internal document this committee would find helpful, which, again, you have the history of doing over the last 20 years, if that would find helpful, then that's something that we can certainly include on a capital warrant, which is, again, what we did in 2007 and 2017.
I guess we'll just jump right in. So Bob, I think you hit the nail on the head. We need to put dollar figures in there because without that, we're at a wish list, right? So I think one of the takeaways I took from Ways and Means this year was they definitely want a prioritized list and to understand where the cost is coming from and what it's going to support, right? So I think not only cost, but year-over-year, for the next, you know, the first three fiscal years on this plan, we have a one-through-five priority with the projects we have because we have several buildings, maybe the top three. So we identify that to help them, you know, apportion and give us a percentage of the budget when we're having, when the town's having that conversation. And to make it a adjustable bite-size project to put into that budget, right? So I think prioritization, definitely dollar figures for that. And then, you know, really shape this document and focus it more on capturing the lifecycle costs of the building and those really big cost centers. So we have some smaller projects in here, which is fine. But I think, again, they have to be prioritized appropriately for anyone reading this to understand where our priority truly lies, right? Would be my first couple of takeaways from this.
Anyone else? Listen.
I second the need for dollar amounts, just to understand the scope. Obviously, like flooring versus new building is, and there's, I think, the certain things we add as warrants versus the things we add just in our general capital requests. So I know Jeremy, he said he had suggestions on format, so I'm not married to format, but I think some categorizations. The big question I had on here is I, I mean, I know you're saying this is a living document, but I went back to the high school monthly report we just got, and that looks like it's about a year exactly behind Fox Hill. So I'm not sure why we have, continue to have the high school so far out. If it would, in theory, open potentially a year, maybe two behind Fox Hill. If it, you know, I have the, it said schematic design completion August 25, town meeting request September 25. So that would put it in a little bit earlier. That's my only, and then Pine Glen air conditioning only lasts five years. Or are we doing more air conditioning? Those are the two things that kind of jumped out at me.
I'll try to tackle both of those questions, again, through the chair. I don't have an exact science as to why the high school is so far out. I know that we are new into a feasibility study yet, and we don't even have a designated path yet. Being a living document, I can clearly move that. But again, I think I was more filling boxes than I was putting enough effort into know exactly when we would be looking at a new building. As far as the Pine Glen one, there's two parts of Pine Glen. So there was a renovation done to the front of Pine Glen, and there's air conditioning in parts of the building that aren't being captured in this air conditioning project now. Those are already about eight years old. So there is an expectation that those will need some service in upcoming years.
Anyone else?
I have a comment, just that I'm excited to see the accessible walkway to the Francis Wyman Playground, the grass renovation. I think that's definitely a need. It's something that has been talked about frequently, and I'm really excited to see it coming forward. I agree with the other members that dollar amounts would be helpful. And I don't know how often we would update those figures either, whether it be annually, how much work that is for you. You know, I think that that's another thing that we could talk about. But I think that this, it's great to have this, and like you mentioned, there is a lot to digest, digest here. So thank you for putting it together.
I could just follow up. So that's one of the tough parts of this conversation that I have toyed with, is that, you know, even putting today's dollar figure on, right, they're all going to be estimates. So unless we have a company come down or multiple companies come down or go out to bid, let's say, just on a roof, they're really just going to be estimates. And then for me to tell you all with any factuality, you know, what it looks like six, 10, 18 years from now, I feel like that would just be, you know, shooting in the dark and hoping that maybe we land on something. I understand putting today's value makes sense, but even adding a factor into next year's is only going to be an estimate. It's something that I will commit to working on and working through this to get some more details. There are some hidden columns on here that do have some place values in here already for dollars based on today's. But I think what we've seen in the past, especially the past four years, is that construction factors are not following the linear curves that they historically did. So if we had built this four years ago, just in, let's say, a field alone, we wouldn't have seen the 3% to 5% increase, and we're well above that. So I'm reluctant to put numbers in, which is why they're not shown. But there is some madness to this spreadsheet, and like I said, it will continue to grow.
Catherine?
No, I was just going to say, though, I think when you write estimate, like, you put the number in, and there's an estimate, like EST or something next to it. And you can even add an asterisk down at the bottom that states, you know, that it will flex based on, you know, the current state of, you know, 10 years out or whatever. I think most people are going to understand that it's an estimate. And I don't think anyone's going to hold you to that 10 years later. Especially if you make a note and we're using the words estimate. I think it gives us a better, us and the town, a better idea of the future spend versus everyone kind of guessing on their own because you're more of an expert than we are, right? So I think it's smart to put in the estimates and make it clear it's an estimate.
And I, Madam Chair, just, I also think it's important to think that this is a very drastic change in the model. And so, which is perfectly okay, but I feel like an old man now. But when we first started this, it was again more of a wish list. And what drove the long-term capital spending was actually the debt schedule, not the need. So they would identify what fit under the debt curve.
Exactly.
And then people would fit projects under the debt curve. And then they would, if school had gotten, recently got under the debt curve, then we would come off, and then town would go on. So we sort of traded space under the debt curve. But it wasn't, you know, why didn't you have the high school or why wasn't this looked at earlier? It's because honestly, it didn't fit under the debt curve at the, at the time. And that's really not how the town managed these conversations. So again, it's a really a drastic shift to now say we're going to look at need. I think it's important, but then if the debt curve, the... I think it's important, but then if the debt curve, the debt schedule's gonna be driven by the need, then people will need to recognize that that's gonna be more volatile than they've experienced in the past. That, that's, that's all. And it's something that we need to manage differently. And again, it's not a problem for us to do that, but we purposely weren't avoiding this conversation. It's just not how the town wanted this managed in the, in the past. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Jeremy, you had something else?
No, and I think, Bob, to your point, right? Like, for the cost estimations, again, it lets people know what we're gonna do and what we're planning on doing, and it gives us some cost estimation history and lets us tighten up our model, because year over year, we change this. Now, we can sharpen our pencils and go, hey, we're within 10% or 12% or 20%, or we're wildly wrong, right? So, now we have some ways to estimate it. And I think truly FY, you know, 25 to 28 is where numbers need to be tight. Anything outside of that, it's, you know, aspirational, right? And you can be plus or minus 25%, and we put that on there and be honest brokers and say, hey, we don't know that, right? And I think another thing we need to think about with this document too is what's the cadence tempo for it? Do we visit this quarterly, bi-annually? You know, and then what's our cut line to make this into the debt schedule planning? Because this is gonna be a completely useless document if we don't get it into Ways and Means hand, into capital budgets hands, and the other organizations that are gonna, you know, use this as their planning tool in a timely fashion to get them good decision-quality information, you know, so they can kind of have that debt schedule conversation where we need to. And then again, as we improve year over year, we can annotate, hey, this wasn't supported, debt schedules didn't support, this didn't support, and we can continue to move things right or down, or whatever format we come to. But then we have that historical data, so we can answer those questions when we're, you know, queried, like, hey, how come this wasn't done five years ago? Well, this was proposed as number one, two, and three these, this many years, and it wasn't supported based on X, Y, and Z, so we need to get it supported now. And again, it's not to be confrontational, just to have that information when the questions are asked or don't, you know, have to come something on the fly, you know?
Melissa, go ahead.
I think for the items in white, right, like H rack, maintenance, air conditioning, et cetera, I would say even like a small, medium, large, right? Like some scale here, and in 2024, small is less than 50 grand. You know, large is under 300, you know, 50 to 300, et cetera. And then these schools, now we have so many feasibility studies in the works, and the team, I think, said for the 4% escalation, so we can use, we had a, uh, new, a new Pine Glen number come out of the Fox Hill feasibility study. We'll have a high school number within the next month. So, those big ones, and I think those are what's really driving, I think, some, the debt schedule, obviously. And so, having real true numbers escalated appropriately for where they land on the map, I think will help a lot in terms of transparency and prioritization.
Bobby, you wanna, you wanna say something?
Please, or I can wait until you.
No, you go.
Yeah, I just want to say, what I did not include in this, and I think you all are alluding to, is three, if not more, pots of money, right? So, anything that is in my operating budget, typically you wouldn't see on this list. I would call that year-to-year general maintenance. It's really gonna be large capital items, so this is really gonna be either capital warrant article request, or this would be debt schedule or bonding and so forth. So, I would still continue in my line of work to include yearly operations. But this would really be, like I said, above and beyond request and really major repairs. Also, just want to note, as you all have seen in the past, is, is that our list is usually larger than, you know, the appetite that the town is willing to give us, even though the town is very, very generous and has been in the past. That being said, you all get a presentation every year that is above the allotted money for warrant article requests, and then we typically reduce that down to fit within that, that budget. So, it will be some new conversations that we don't typically have with other town departments to say, you know, again, here's our request. Can we make it fit? How, how are we gonna make it work, and where's that funding gonna come from? So, there is a lot that we'll have to get into this conversation and into this spreadsheet that's not there right now. But please just realize that you're seeing a early draft, and these conversations are gonna help build this spreadsheet to what we all can present to the town.
Okay, so I have a slightly different perspective on this, probably because I've been doing it for so long. I think it's great that you've put this together. I, I think, um, what kind of got us in a pickle most recently is that when we came up with the field plan, that was not really expected. So, Ways and Means was not happy about having something that they hadn't known about, planned for. They kind of saw it as sprung on them, I think. And I think what's most important is having enough projection on these items that they see this, they see this coming, that, you know, everybody knows in advance what we're asking for, and that it isn't just a last-minute thing, which turned out unfortunately to be with the field. But there's a lot of, the school committee isn't able to fund things of this magnitude without help from the town and without the support of town meeting. So, while it's great to have a, sort of a map of where we're going and maybe what it will cost, or I like Melissa's idea of, you know, whether it's under this or over that, or, you know, I don't think you're gonna be able to estimate these things. I mean, the amount of work you'd put into estimating them and having them really way off when the time comes is, is kind of likely to be a lot of work for a wrong projection in the future. But I do think there's a way to describe them as far as, like she said, under 50 or 50 to 300 or whatever. So, I think what we as a committee need to understand is that all of this is dependent on working with the town. The town, when it comes to capital items, the town holds the purse strings. And the way we get at the money is to talk about the items that you have listed here and anything we may have forgotten. We can move them around. But I think just that the transparency and the communication with the town side and the Ways and Means Committee is the most important part of this exercise. And so, you've got a nice list at the beginning of a list, and, and as we go forward, hopefully, we won't miss out on something and then suddenly need it. But I think if, if it was like an emergency, they're very good about that and very accepting of it. But I just want to emphasize from my perspective that I like the document. It's a great idea. It's, you know, it's perfect planning. But I think we also need to focus on the way this town works is for us to work with them to get these things done.
Catherine?
I was just thinking, in addition to Melissa's ideas, maybe even color coding, what's most important, because again, it's a wish list, right? So, if we're going through it, and, I mean, color coding is flexible as well. So, you know, what is a priority today may not be a priority three years from now, but at least it kind of is like, if we're gonna put, going to put things in front of the town, if we're color coding what's here, you know, this is hotter than that, you know, red, yellow, green, whatever you want to call it, so that everyone kind of anticipates in facilities' mind what would be more important than something else. And also, like I said, the, you know, if you're, if you're putting the estimates in, you can guess, but I think a combination.
Madam Chair, this is really how we've thought about technology for a long period of time. So, we really have put in a capital line in the town's operating budget, I think for 15 years now. When we do our infrastructure, we are basically, that funding source is there. We know we're going to need a replacement every five years or six years. We've worked with companies, so we didn't want infrastructure to be a limiting factor. So, when town meeting votes for that, sort of that capital line in their operating budget, it's for, it's for technology, infrastructure. When we also look at, Bob, iPads, computers, printers, we always think about a replacement cycle, because what we ran into is, when I first came here, Sun Microsystems gave Burlington some sort of grant for technology. We bought all this technology and then didn't buy another thing for, for 10 years. And again, I think when they first bought it, it was great, but things were kind of falling apart when, when we got here. So, we have an Apple lease purchase. We're trying to, our iPads are on, what, a three-year, four, three-year rotation? So, we're trying to make sure that when we have these tools, that they're sustainable. When we're putting in a synthetic field, which we're gonna be putting in a large one at Marshall Simons, we already know it's gonna have a 10- to 12-year life. Planning for that, and time goes, again, sometimes the weeks go slowly, the, the years go pretty quickly. It's, um, all of a sudden, you know, 10 or 12 years show up, and it's gonna be a million and a half dollars to replace even the field surface. That is something that we can project, that is gonna be something that's predictable. And as the town develops more higher-quality assets, I don't know how to say that well, but buildings that are newer, facilities that are updated, you know, I think, thinking about that in a sustainable way. And again, the initial expenditure is very generous and great, but making sure that that is gonna be a sort of safe and playable surface, that, that things are gonna exist. You know, some of it is somewhat predictable, and we do have that practice in other areas. So, I just think it's really expanding how we've talked about, again, technology for a long time, something that sort of gets out of date pretty quickly. And again, maybe the cycle isn't as out of date, you know, maybe it's every 50 years for a school, but it's still planning that the town can kind of think about. Or 10 years for a synthetic field, or you were talking about, you know, eight to 10 years for HVAC units. I don't, I'm way out of my area of expertise, but I'm saying we do have this practice in, in other areas. And so, um, so I think it's applying that to here, and then maybe we would see more of the town voting to have some expanded capital money in their operating budget. So, again, if they're setting aside $100,000 a year for 10 years, then that, they know that's gonna be another resurface of a, of a synthetic field or something.
And again, that's communication with the town.
It is communication with the town. So, but I'm saying, I think that's, um, we've had successful communication in other areas. Technology is the one that pops into my head, and I think that we can try to do that. The scale here may be, again, bigger in a lot of areas, and the timeframe may be that players, that players, elected officials come and go. But I'm saying it's that, doesn't change the need for resurfacing of a, of a field. So, and so I do think it's, um, it's an important conversation to have.
Okay, Bob, and then we're gonna get moving along.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, obviously, because this is a facilities-long-term plan, this doesn't encompass any yearly requests that may come up, that are curriculum-based, department-based. You know, we try to capture athletic fields.
It's just the big stuff.
Just ones really that I'm looking at, right? So, when we have these conversations with department heads and principals and so forth, there are other conversations that will come up year to year that maybe are not captured in this plan. Correct.
All right, good job. Thank you.
Can I just do one alibi, Madam Chair?
Yeah, sure.
You know, and that's what I think the onus falls back on this committee to do that hard look at prioritization, because then that scopes Bob level of effort year over year, getting estimates for these projects. So, if we say these are our top three, then he's not out getting 10 quotes for things. It's just, hey, these three things, and, because we're putting it forward as our top three for the priority. So, it does kind of manage the level of effort a little bit.
Okay. Moving on, project planning update, is that something?
I didn't do a good job naming the agenda item, Bob. That was just what's going on for the summer projects, so.
Oh, oh, all right, okay.
Just an update.
I'll try to be brief, but I, I feel like first and foremost, I have to thank the custodians and the maintenance crews. Since June 20th, obviously, even prior to that during the school year, they've been working tremendously to tackle the amount of projects that we shouldn't be able to get done in two months, but somehow we do. So, then, again, a big thank you to all of those groups and for the summer help, students that have either returned or are joining us new this year to help assist us during these summer projects. Again, we have HVAC work going on at all buildings. The Pine Glen air conditioning project is underway. Parts have been ordered, starting to be delivered, and project work will begin on Monday of next week. We have a Pine Glen roof and soffit work that begins Monday of next week. Middle school bathrooms are under construction right now. I think four bathrooms are being worked on. Refrigerant detectors and smoke arms have already been installed at the middle school. As mentioned earlier, tree work at Pine Glen, also at Fox Hill, has already taken place. The Pine Glen fencing has been ordered and expected to begin installation first week in August. You'll see some carpet that's been installed in central office. That'll be finishing up on Friday. They're also in the high school doing, uh, foreign language and guidance office. We've ordered a brand-new forklift for the high school. Boiler parts have been ordered to re-tube boilers at the high school. We are finalizing some orders right now on walkie-talkies and batteries and communication. Cafeteria tables for Fox Hill. We just selected colors and quantities today, so those will be in the works. Those are about 10 weeks out for delivery, so we won't have them for the start of school, but again, underway. Maintenance van has been selected and scoped. In the process of creating a purchase order for that today or tomorrow. Side caveat, something that I have learned, is that cargo vans are readily available at Daila ships. And I just found out that cargo vans and passenger vans, even though they're the same body style, have a different chassis, and because they have to carry more passengers and they have more security points on them, right? So, cargo vans, plentiful. Passenger vans have a one-to-two-year wait. So, we are still waiting for the two that we ordered. There was an update that provided to us on Friday. They moved into our queue of frame building. So, I don't have a delivery date, but we're getting potential that, potentially September, October is when we should. And again, we're a year and a half into ordering passenger vans. We just received bids back from the Francis Wyman baseball field project. We're finalizing that contract, you know, and as Mr. Brooks mentioned earlier, we're finalizing the committee members for the middle school field project, and we'll be scheduling committee meetings in August. That's an overview. Again, that's not on top of all the other new lights that are going in, floors that are being stripped and waxed, furniture that's being built and ordered.
Sounds like a busy summer.
Busy, busy summer. So, again, thank you, maintenance and custodial staff.
Any questions? Nope, okay, let's move along. Transportation Subcommittee update?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I put this agenda item on because I think at our last meeting before the end of school, we mentioned, I know we have a Transportation Subcommittee. We had talked about having them meet. It just seems like we bump into lots of transportation issues, communication issues. I just wanted to suggest that we schedule a Transportation Subcommittee meeting. The survey went out. We have a new company. Again, the first two weeks are always exciting and challenging, and, but I want to make sure we're meeting the committee's expectations. So, that's kind of really what I wanted to say. We do, Bob, there's a lot of the routing, and if there are, hard for us to change in the middle of the chaos, and so I just want to make sure, not that we're, there's gonna be changes. You all know that. There's gonna be sort of bus adjustments and all that other stuff. But I just want to make sure that we're talking about transportation, so it doesn't feel like we're reacting all the time. And we do have a new tracking software that's part of our contract. I think, Melissa, Ms. Masardo, I'm sorry, you mentioned doing maybe a parent training or doing some other things, rolling that out to families. So, I, I just want to make sure it's, the summer's going quickly and that we have a chance, so we're meeting your expectations, because I feel like we disappoint this committee a lot when it comes to transportation, and it's not something we have a whole lot of control over. So, I just want to make sure we're doing what we can as proactively as we can.
Parents would appreciate that, I think. So, you need, you want to set up a meeting with Catherine and Melissa? That's your Subcommittee?
It is, and I'm seeing nods, so I'm saying I would like to get sort of that sooner or later. But if you all have some expectations, I would like to make sure that you get those to me and you communicate them to me, or ideas. Bob has told you how busy he is, and then he's also doing transportation, and we need to bring in someone or ask for some sort of dedicated transportation communicator or some, I'd like, I just want to make sure we're meeting your expectations, because no doubt, we're gonna have changes. No doubt, parents are gonna want more stops and the routes to be shorter. That's sort of impossible, and how we communicate.
And how we communicate this is, I don't want it to be from a, just appear like we're doing everything last minute, because we're not, but I just want to make sure that we're as proactive as possible. I don't want to repeat much.
Bob, you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, or a couple comments, please, is that, so I am working with the company right now. I will say names, so NRT is the company that we're working with. It's similar to the company that we were working with in the past.
Same owner, right?
Exactly, under the same parent umbrella company. So we will have a majority of the same drivers and working with the same team, but again, under a new label. That being said, I just want to clarify that we are paying this company for their service, and they are routing. And what happens is, once the routes are provided to us, myself, my team, Anisha and Peg as well, will also assist with looking at the routes. And then, of course, as you're very well aware of, we get numerous requests to change those routes.
Right.
So there's always a conversation of, do we go with the routes? Do we make a lot of adjustments? And, you know, there's always a time factor as to what decisions make the most. So obviously, anything that's a safety and security issue, we clearly will put to the top of our list. If it's a convenience request, it may get held until later. So those first couple of weeks are definitely something that we look at and watch. And I do want to comment, since, again, this is a new contract, what I've been told already is that the tracking software is ordered, and the parts are ordered for the buses, but they're not expected to be installed until October. That's the timeframe that I was given. So I'm told they will not be installed for the start of school. It is a requirement in the contract that they do have to have that software, so we'll have to figure out what exactly that means as far as that. They are committed to it, but again, it's parts that they have to order, so they have to outfit 20-plus buses, 20 for the 18, I'm sorry, 20 for the 77-passenger full-size buses, plus any specialized transportation buses as well, too. So equipment and then software issue is part of the delay.
I know other committee members have input on this, but I just want to say, you need to talk to them. We're going to have some really upset parents. They're counting on that software.
There's one right here, yeah.
They want it day one. And we have been telling them it's part of the contract. And this isn't your fault.
They had to get the contract, and then they had to order parts.
They signed the contract.
But how do you get a contract without it when we stipulate that you have to have it for the contract? How do they win the contract without it? And Nicole's not here, but.
Well, they have to commit to providing it. It doesn't say a day. I'm not defending.
All right, so I'm hoping we're not paying for buses until October.
Well, we're not paying for buses, period, yet, until we obviously use them. And then I guess we would have to figure out what percentage of services we would get from them. Once we start, we clearly want to provide transportation once school starts. I'm just relaying a message as to what's today, but they have already been told that there's a priority, and whether or not they shift different companies. But when I say shift different companies, the parent app that they're looking at now, right, if they continue with that company, there are parts and materials that they're waiting for, that then need to be delivered and installed onto their buses before any software could be used. If they switch companies, which they're entitled to, sure, they may be able to get equipment faster.
Do we have a contract attorney? I'm relatively serious, but like, do we have a contract attorney that is looking at this?
This is a real problem.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
And it's not your fault.
It's not your fault, right. Because there should be something, you know, something that we can either refund, or, you know, pushing it to having them switch to get it something quicker. Discount, I mean, something, because we shouldn't be paying the full price if we're not getting the full service, right?
Penalized financially.
Yeah, something, right. I know we put some other words in there for drivers not being on time, et cetera. But the other thing I want to, if I can speak something else, too, kind of with, when we have our meeting, not to want to make more work for you, but I think it would be a good idea for us to put a presentation together to kind of, just looking at social media. I think there are a lot of people who do a lot of whining on it and don't understand all of, you know, the changes that we made from the old contract to the new, what additions are there. And I also think it's important, I mean, you know, we try and do a good job at saying, there really aren't that many bus companies out there. And I think people get frustrated, why are we staying with the company? Why are we staying with the company? If there's not much choice, and we have to really emphasize that? Exactly. And I think that by putting together a presentation and explaining that and showing the changes that we've made in, you know, made in the contract, just something that's easy for everyone to see and understand, and, you know, including the tracking software that we're adding, all of that, I think is important to put in one place versus, we kind of brought it up in meetings and piecemeal and whatever, and here's the contract. But I don't think we really specified all the changes made.
Can I backtrack for a second? Not to ease the committee, this is a relatively new conversation that I am recently made aware of as far as the parent app, which is why I'm communicating to you all the conversations that have been had. I don't want to wait until September to say, now I'm hearing about this. So that means the company right now has some actions to do, right? Whether find a software or commit back to us that they're not fulfilling the contract. But those are the conversations that we're having. On top of that, they do have last year's routes already provided to them in student list. The new student data won't be flipped over until after August 1, which is typical every year. So roughly the first week of August, between August 1 and August 5, is where we typically get the data and pass that on. We did have a survey completed where we had 285, I believe, families returned saying that they do not want transportation. So we will remove those 285 families and their children or students from the list of transportation, which will help us clean up any routes there. And right now, we are anticipating an August 21 go-live date on the website for routes. I know in previous years, we've waited to the last day, or routes haven't been ready until the last day before school starts. Right now, we are shooting for one week prior to school, the first day of school, putting these on the website. So if we don't give the data until August 5, and we have it up on the website by August 21, that is two weeks to get all of the data, all of the routes, everything done. So again, this is a communication to the committee, letting you know what is going to take place. That two weeks will happen really quick, and we may put something up on the website August 21. And you know that from August 21 until August 28, there will be changes that happen, and once August 28 happens, more changes will happen. So we will try to communicate that the best we can through Parent Square and other avenues. But I look forward to a meeting with the Transportation Committee and.
Okay. Eric, you can, you and Bob can set that up.
I have a question. So is there, there's tracking software already on the bus that the bus company uses to track the buses? Is there a parent, for a customer-facing application that that software can be used in the meantime while we're waiting for this other parent app? Like, is there something we can do in the meantime, or are there other buses that already have these, have the app equipped?
So the current buses that are allocated for our route have GPS on them and have cameras, I'm told. So the GPS is a tracking app available, not parent-facing.
Okay.
So that would be like a one-on-one or administrator-based access to it. So the app would be requiring additional hardware and an interface for that. So obviously, the buses would have full-time, you know, 4G, 5G cellphone capabilities, and then obviously getting the app integration, parents signed up, everything else. So I've requested some information, and I will share that, but they don't have the capabilities currently in the buses.
I'm just wondering if there are other buses out there that have these capabilities that we can use in the meantime that are, you know, what if we need a bus also that a bus is replacing one of our other buses? There's an issue, and this, a bus is being brought in to substitute one of our traditional buses or routes. You know, is that bus going to be equipped with this application, or the software needed to run the application? Or how will that work?
So in the contract, it asks for 18 full-size buses and two spares. So that would be 20 buses that are required to have that. Additionally, there are specialized transportation buses that are numbered by quantity as well, too, and I believe that's four. So then those would be app-based and tracked as well, and also required to have cameras and GPS on them as well. When it gets to charter buses, not that it's not required, but there is a possibility that if we're so far down into the list or late to make a request, that we could get a bus that would not have that capability on it. There's a possibility there. And I can't speak definitively, but if four buses were not available, there is a possibility that we could have a substitute bus that would not have that software on it. So those are details that I will need to find out and report back. But there is some logistics built into the contract to anticipate that, not saying that their whole entire fleet of every vehicle they have is required to have that, because then again, that incurs a cost to the district.
Okay. And one follow-up question. How would we communicate that to families? What, if there is, their bus today doesn't have that service, application where they can track their bus? You know, somebody's waiting, they're waiting for their bus to come up on the, on the app, and they're going, why isn't it here? Like, you know, I think that that could cause some confusion. So I'm wondering how we'll be able to communicate that to families in the, if that does happen.
My initial thought would be through Parent Square, and then as quickly as we are aware of that. So if the bus was not leaving the lot, then hopefully there would be a mechanism, or at least a dispatch opportunity to us, to let us make aware of it. We have also talked as a possibility of maybe, I'm not saying this will happen, but allowing the company themselves to actually make Parent Square notifications. That would actually cut down some, some time in the middle. But again, we have not worked out the logistics on that yet.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. And then obviously, if the parents do have the app on their device, or phone, or laptop, or email, then if the bus, like I said, is not dispatched out of the lot, then hopefully a communication will go out as well through the app that the bus is not leaving the lot, and then a substitute bus would be in its place, and hopefully a bus number, you know, would be included in that message.
Okay.
This is a really big issue, and I think you can tell, for the entire committee, because we hear from parents all the time, and we did promise that we would have this in the new contract. So I'd, we'd all appreciate it if you would speak with the bus company and let them know that we're really upset about this. Jeremy?
Just one part of comment. So I'm pretty sure you did this, Bob, but I'd like to know if they're claiming it's a hardware, a software, or a hardware-software system integration challenge, because I find it hard to believe they can't find equipment. So I'm believing it's a software integration challenge. I would also caution the committee about pivoting too quickly for software, because in my line of business, you can have it right, or you can have it right now. So we may pigeonhole ourselves into something that'll cause us a lot more problems pivoting quickly, right? So I'm not trying to defend any of this, but again, we do have to be very deliberate in the way we make a decision if we're going to change something. And then feedback I've gotten from parents is, they want to kind of know where cameras are placed, because there's been a few incidents that parents have brought to me, like, oh, there's a camera in the front, but it doesn't show the whole vehicle. So maybe in that brief, given a, hey, this is what the camera view looks like, because a few parents have asked me for that. And then some app training, too. I think we already kind of hit on that, but maybe have a sandbox day where folks can log in and see what it looks like in a sandbox environment, and they can interact with it, if that's possible.
I also think that if there's a delay, which I don't want to even give them the option of being delayed, but if there is a delay, there might be some temporary way. I mean, I check where my kids are on their, by connecting with them on Find My. So maybe there's a temporary fix, but we need something.
Noted.
Okay.
I can be quick, but the other thing, you just asked for what we want out of the Subcommittee, but I think this is our opportunity with a new company and a new software to revisit the routes. And I would love to have, like, here's our standard for the routes, right? Elementary students walk X amount of space, et cetera. Middle schoolers walk this, and then we'll, it eliminates a little bit of the, well, I want it here, I want it here, please change, right? Like, just because we had a stop here for 10 years doesn't mean it's efficient, you know what I mean? So if we have, here's our guiding principles, here's how we made the routes, these are the three inputs that we used, and here's how we will address requests, right? Safety. I think, I know there's always a question, like, if there's a sidewalk, they can walk on it. I don't know if there's no sidewalk, we're asking them to walk X. I don't know if the software knows whether it's authorized or not, but I'm just asking, like, what, what are the principles we're saying? What feeds that route software that the bus company has, and then how do we amend it if need be?
Okay. Oh, you've got another one? Come on, Jeremy, speed it up.
So Cambridge Street construction is going to be happening throughout the school year. Lots of changes coming with bus routes, so I think we need to be prepared to communicate out for that, as, you know, they're installing sidewalks, taking sidewalks out and all that to part of the calculus you're doing for route planning.
Okay. I guess you're going to need a meeting. All right. Fox Hill School Building Committee update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a very, a meeting before the time. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't mean to step in, but please.
We just, right now, we're just in a holding pattern while we've approved the schematic design, so we're just waiting for the MSBA board meeting, and we have to approve invoices and minutes, just to, so that Dormwood Year has a full packet to submit to the MSBA at the end of August. Dr. Conti and I have some sort of meeting on Tuesday. Still unclear what it is. I think we're looking at the dollar amounts.
Good luck.
Yeah. We have some community communications in the works prior to town meeting. There will be some tours of Fox Hill for folks that need one in the middle of the day in August, and that's where we are.
Eric?
No, it's all covered. I think Tuesday's meeting is going to be where the MSBA gets more definitive on what they're going to pay for and how much. So what qualifies and what doesn't. So it should give us more, more details that, in terms of the overall project costs and what the reimbursements will be.
Great. Let's hope it goes well. Okay, the Burlington High School Building Committee update.
Next meeting, August 8, 6:30.
Eric, you got anything on that?
No, ma'am.
Yeah, you, oops. Pine Glen School, we've already been over, standing agenda item, but the AC is coming along and the other projects as well.
Roof and fence and trees.
Okay, we have, is there anyone with any old or new business to bring up that hasn't been discussed? Nope. Okay. We have need for executive session, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to contract negotiations. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school district, and the chair so declares. Yes, the chair does so declare. Superintendent's contract, and I would like a motion to go into executive session. We will return to public session only for purposes of adjournment.
Someone?
Mrs. Bond.
Aye.
Mrs. Masardo.
Aye.
What's your name?
Ms. Navoicic. That's me, yes.
Ms. Brooks.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're in executive session.